Go ahead.
Tael, call the meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board to order. It's Monday, June 17th, 2019, and it's 7:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6, that sect of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. I'll ask everyone to please rise for the present pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? I'll open the meeting now to the general public for anything that is not on our agenda for this evening. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Frigiri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mendel. Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken. Chairman Keller.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our board planner, Ms. Fafate.
Here.
Our board attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Yep.
And our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
Okay. You want to take care of swearing in our...
Sure.
Jash Patel, would you please come forward?
Yes.
Oh, there he is, over there.
Yeah. Raise your right hand. I state your... You need this paper. There you are. I state your name.
I, Jaiish Kumar Patel.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith?
And I... That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the government established.
In the United States?
In the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially?
That I will impartially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of?
Of the office of?
Planning Board Member, Alternate Number Two?
Planning Board Member, Alternate Number Two.
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills?
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
As you heard, Jash Patel is our newest member of the board. Welcome, Jash.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you. And by the way, you can be sworn in as president with fewer words than you just uttered. Okay, would someone like to move the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, in, let's see, we've got two resolutions. Petroleum Marketing Group Exxon, 3019, Route 46, Block 413, Lots 1 and 2, Application 19:505. I move the resolution granting preliminary and final major site plan with C variants.
For a second?
Second of Perelik.
Perelik, seconds, please call the roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Vivek Mottshatshar, 96 Chesapeake Avenue, Block 593, Lot 17, Application 18:525. I move the motion granting minor subdivision with C variants.
Is there a second?
Second. Hernandez?
Hernandez, seconds, please call the roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes. Okay, thank you. The first item on the agenda is Application Number 19:510, Sylvan Campus Realty, located at 7 Sylvan Way and Campus Drive.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, Stephen Tombalackian from Wiener Law Group, on behalf of the applicant. Chairman, if the board will recall, a few months back, we were before the Minor Site Plan Committee for Minor Site Plan Review and Approval for, for lack of a better word, the Beer Garden. Beer Garden feature, the amenity, that's between 7 Campus and 8 Sylvan. And as we promised the committee then, we were going to be back before a planning board this summer for the full-blown site plan approval to, you know, because the initial application was more just to get the project rolling, and this is to kind of cement the application. So that's why we're here tonight. To my right is Tom Golden. The board is familiar with Mr. Golden, did most of the work on the MacCalli campus for many years. And without further ado, I'd like to kind of pass the baton over to Tom to explain to you why it is we're here before the board tonight for a formal site plan review and approval.
If you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about... Go ahead. You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Thomas Golden, G-O-L-D-E-N, Vice President of Development, MacCalli Realty Corporation. That's the parent company of the applicant.
Mr. Tom Balakian, he's a fact witness, not an expert, correct?
He's a fact witness.
All you... Your witness?
Um, would you like to give glasses?
Let me interrupt. Do you want to do waivers?
Do the waivers really quickly?
That's exactly...
Let's get rid of the waivers.
So there's a number of waivers and some of them... There's also recommendations of testimony, some of which the applicant kind of already addressed perhaps in the... Before the minor committee, but the full board didn't have the benefit of that. So in terms of waivers, we recommend a waiver from the DEP, a letter of interpretation regarding wetlands. There are no regulated wetlands on the property. And then because of the somewhat limited nature of the proposal in terms of, you know, no actual buildings being constructed, we recommend a number of waivers, including spot elevations, location of existing buildings. They're kind of shown on the plans. Floor plans. In terms of natural features, it's already full... The site is fully developed. There are no significant natural features present. Utilities, there are no changes proposed. Soil dedication and sedimentation control, again, no, no major building proposed and no changes in grade. No new streets proposed, so we recommend a waiver on the street dedication. In terms of temporary construction or storage, the construction is not significant enough to... That we think those would be required. And no traffic study or environmental assessment report are needed because the site doesn't rise to that level. And then the applicant is proposing combined final... Preliminary and final site plan, so we recommend a waiver on the conditions of preliminary approval and having to provide separate sheets.
Okay. Someone move to grant the waivers as listed in the BFJ report?
That's exactly what I move at this moment.
Is there a second?
Second of Perelik.
Second and third.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Healy.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
Was I muttering? I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Anybody hear me?
Indicating in case he was in a meeting, he was having trouble.
Thank you.
Good to go?
Okay.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board who were not part of the Minor Site Plan Committee, we're back in front of that Site Plan Committee on April 8th to provide for... We're calling the Beer Garden, for lack of a better term of art. 7 Sylvan, 8 Campus, in the MacCalli Business Campus, there is a courtyard, fairly large courtyard in the middle. When we're here in April, we got the board's approval. What we're looking to do is, in that courtyard, there is a pool. We're going to fill in a portion of the pool to create a boardwalk, a platform, on which we're going to put tables and chairs and umbrellas and string lights and things of that sort. We're going to have a couple trailers in the courtyard. We'll get to that in a second. I'll just refresh everybody's memory, a couple trailers that would serve liquor. We have a liquor license application from the township committee, place-to-place transfer from where we have it to here. That's in process. We also didn't have much planned for the rest of the courtyard. We had some Adirondack chairs, we had some other umbrellas, people sitting around. The area was fenced in, has to be fenced in, under alcohol and beverage controls, rules. But that was pretty much limited to an area, pretty much around the center courtyard. Here, to get a better idea of what that looked like.
Do you want to mark these down?
Counsel?
Was this part of the site plan submission?
This was actually...
Why don't we mark it? Mark that A1.
Tom, if you could describe that for the record.
It is the landscape plan prepared by Malou and Bauer, the architect, Landscape Architect Sheet L-102. This was part of what was submitted to the board.
I'm marking the A1 with the A.
So again, here's 7 Sylvan, 8 Campus, this is the building itself. The original plan had basically...
Can I ask you to please hold the microphone to make sure that we get your testimony?
Absolutely.
Okay, better?
Better.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as I referenced, this area, this is the existing fountain. We're going to fill it in, we're going to leave areas of the fountain that will still work around it, but this will get filled in with a lightweight structural fill. And there'd be, you know, wood planks, you can create a little boardwalk. And then the chairs and the tables, the umbrellas all sit up on that. You have a couple ramps leading to it. And the original application had a smaller area of a fence. It was basically a smaller area around here. What we've done now is, based on all that, which was our original plan, we wanted to get going quickly, and of course, things never go as planned, so we're a little slower. And we're in front of you with the full plan. And this is the full plan. And the reason we're here is because these walkways that lead to the courtyard, right now are... It's basically stone dust, a hard, compact surface. We're going to place them with pavers. That becomes a new impervious surface that triggers site plan approval. Okay? So we have a relatively... We have a little bigger patio area in here. We had the two trailers. We had an area for a pizza oven. Okay? We had an area here on this walkway where, during the summer and early fall, we hope to have, you know, an Amish farmer's market. The guys would come in in the morning, put some tents up, sell their food, whatever, and they go home the end of the day. So that was part of the original plan here. What we've added this time around is, we wanted to... Want to be as friendly as we can be. So we've added two other things. One, we've added a little dog park. Okay? Little area for the dog park. We've also added a little area where we can put in some play equipment for kids, small kids, playground equipment. Okay? And I'll have the Landscape Architect to walk you through it a little bit better, but the idea is to make this a friendly environment. As we talked about here in April, we were talking about during the week, Monday to Friday, 5 to 10, excuse me, Monday to Thursday, 5 to 10. Sun, Saturday, Friday night would be, again, 5 to 10, excuse me, then Saturday and Sunday would be noon to 10. We're thinking those would be reasonable hours. We... We don't want people here before 5 because the businesses are still in the building. The weekend, the park is relatively empty. There's people working here and there, but for all intents and purposes, the park is empty. So doing it at noon, if we get people to show up at noon, great. They may show up at 2 o'clock, maybe we have to amend that and push it further back, but the idea is to be there if they can, you know, if people want to take advantage of it. This is not limited to the business park. People want to come from other areas of Parsippany, other buildings, they're welcome. Okay? The fact that it's basically from 5 to 10 really addresses any... There's not going to be any parking issues, even if you get a lot of people, because most people going home at that point. The weekend, same thing. Nobody's parked here. So we don't think there's any real traffic issue associated with that, and that was one of the comments that we had. A couple of the other items that we've added here, when we were here in April, we had a landscaping plan that we pulled out at that point. It's now in, so we have a lot of landscaping, which we'll show you. That is also because when your ordinance, when you go from grass to dirt or dirt to grass, it's considered major development under your ordinance. So other than adding a quarter acre of impervious surface, the other... And adding this, which is already in an impervious pond or fountain, the rest of it is changes grass to landscaping, landscaping the grass. But your ordinance characterizes that as development, therefore, I'm triggered for stormwater. And in this instance, it's war... It's stormwater reduction, not water quantity, not water quality, because quality is over a quarter acre. So as part of the reviews, and I'll go through them, we'll address that comment. We've added some lighting in here, there's some bowlers and some sconces. Again, the Landscape Architect will walk you through a little bit of that. They had a little bit more amenities. And we've added some car charging stations. You know, the car charging stations are really an amenity for the tenants. Okay? What they'll do is, it'll be sort of like controlled by a key fob, that if you're in the building, or one of the buildings in the campus, and you want to take advantage of it, you would go to our property management and say, "I want a key fob, I have an electric car," and they would be able to use that car charging station. It's not that if you have a Tesla, you can come in off the street, pull up in the middle of the night and start using the car charging station. Okay? It's for our tenants. Okay? So there are... And those are shown on the drawing as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a quick question?
Sure.
On the car charging, will people who don't have an electric car have the ability to park there anyway? How will that be possible?
Well, we have property management, we have onsite security, we have roving... We're going to discourage that. The idea is, it's sort of like a handicap. You really... I can't stop them, but we'll do our best. We can't...
Probably see repeat offenders.
I don't know how many people really do it. I mean, we don't know. I think, how many do we have, Tom? Do we have six? How many? Okay. So we have four trucks to serve. Maybe nobody uses it, maybe more people use it. But I would tend to think that anybody who uses it is going to come in, charge their car during the day when they're at work and go home. But if somebody wants to stay at the Beer Garden after work, and again, they have a fob, they can do it there as well. So the idea is just another amenity. The whole purpose of all these plans that we've been in front of the board for, to amenitize the campus. Okay? You have Wegmans. I know it's Hanover, but it's a supermarket. 24 Hour Fitness also in Hanover portion of the campus is opening in a week and a half, a new gym. We're in front of the Hanover Planning Board for a Panera restaurant on that site as well next Tuesday. Viewers, members of the board, we were here, how long ago was that? Dryden Way, where we have the two new restaurants going up on Route 10 and Dryden Way. One is the Capital Grill, which will be in Parsippany, and the other one is Seasons 52, which will be in Hanover. Both of them accessed from Dryden Way. We have, you know, daycare, we have plans for, you know, we've talked about a hotel. Anything we can do to amenitize this, it's hard to retrofit a large silo. If we had 400 acres, we'd start over again, you'd do it differently. Can't. It's been out here 30 odd years. We're trying the best we can, so we're here on 135 Sylvan, and the board approved that amenity package. This is now 7 Sylvan, 8 Campus. We're also probably going to look at doing something at 4 and 6 Campus. So each asset that we own, we're trying to amenitize to attract better tenants, better quality tenants, more long-lasting tenants, people that want to come to Parsippany. So that's... The last scheme here is the fence. Okay? We had it originally rel...
Back to the chart.
I'm sorry.
Patrons of this facility will not be able to use those charging stations.
Unless they have a fob, they can't. If they're a tenant, then they happen to be there, they can park. But people who come, again, just like any member of the public, we wouldn't do that because the idea is really for our tenant base. I don't... You know, we didn't want to get into the process of, if somebody shows up here at 3 o'clock in the morning and just plugs in.
Someone that's driving in, in their electric vehicle or their hybrid vehicle, to patronize this facility, so while they're there, they... Could your restaurant manager or facility manager say, "Here's the fob"?
I don't know that answer. I mean, could it clearly ask the property manager? That was not the original intent. And the fact that there's so many parking spaces, and the fact that we really don't expect people to be here for hours. I don't think I want somebody here from 5 to 10 drinking outside, you know, while hours...
And charging.
Right. So the idea is not to do that, but, Mr. Chairman, I can clearly ask that question. That would... That would not be the intended purpose serving people. Our idea was, is for our tenants, people to pay in the rent.
Will the electric spaces be marked in a certain way to at least provide?
Yes.
Easy notice that?
Yes.
These are electric spaces.
Yep. As I said, they're sort of, you know, it's like, the idea is, you park in a handicap space, you park in an electric car charging station. People try to get away with it, but again, we have roving security, we have property management. The idea would be to manage this in a way that would not have that happen. I'm sure it's going to happen, because that's just the nature of the beast, but the idea is to minimize that.
I don't want to sound argumentative, but Parsippany is making its best effort to be a friend of the environment. And I think if you had the availability of charging stations for patrons, not someone that's going to go at 3:00 in the morning and steal your electricity, but if they're patronizing and spending money there, wouldn't it be an asset?
Yeah.
Not only to you to attract people, but it helps Parsippany become more environmentally friendly by having access to charge my car.
I will gladly bring that up to property management, and we can provide a response back to the board on that, and then have you address it. That's about... I can't... I'm not in position to answer that.
I'm going to break protocol here. Any other board members have any comments on that?
I agree with you. I, you know, I believe every construction at this point should have publicly available car charging stations.
I would defer more publicly in the sense of, Mr. Chairman, is that they're coming to the Beer Garden, not that they're coming here and going somewhere else, or just coming here to charge a... Sit in their car and charge their car.
No.
Yes.
Right.
No. I agree with you.
Okay.
So the bartender might have a fob, is what you're saying?
Yes.
We have, remember, this, the... The way this is controlled, this defense, each point of access has a security guard.
Right.
Okay? Maybe the security guard, somebody comes up and says, "I got an electric car here, can I get... Can I somehow validate me to park over there?" So we'll figure out, can we do it? How we do it? Do we want to do it? And it so advised the board. That pleases the chair.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
No, I support. I support what you're saying.
How many charging stations will there be?
Well, there's four that can serve eight vehicles.
Eight, okay.
Again, I don't, you know, how many people come and how many people would fill that even during the day? There's an open question. I just don't know.
I'm just a little concerned if I'm in, Mr. Chair, because the application will, in all likelihood, be completed and voted on tonight, so leaving this as an open issue, I'm not sure what... The board has no control once we get past voting tonight.
Would the chairman feel comfortable letting the board's professionals work that out with the applicant?
Subject you?
We can do something like we've done other, is we would make a good faith effort and address that and provide to the board's professionals our efforts in that area. And as long as it's not a condition that it says you have to have it, we would feel amenable to working that out with the board professionals, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. The other comment I wanted to raise was the fence. We talked about making this all within the fenced area. Okay? And the only real comment I have is, for the board, we originally thought that the fence would be, these trees are existing, that we put the fence on the inside of the trees. But the more we thought about it, it seemed to make more sense to put it on the outside of the tree adjoining the sidewalk, so that people inside the Beer Garden could take advantage of sitting under the trees. You put the fence in too far, you're going to... They're going to lose that. If it's a hot sunny day, it'd be nice to have the trees there to go move the Adirondacks under a tree. If I have the fence there, and I got to be a certain distance away because of tree root protection, we thought, based, again, working with the professionals, we would provide, I got to go out there and basically see how far the tree roots go out. Can I put in a fence post without hurting the tree? But if I can, I'd like to do that, because I think that that's better to give people that ability to sit under a tree having a nice beer than it is sitting here and saying, geez, I wish that tree, the sun was coming the other way and the shade was a little bit further out. So we have this, we show it here, but I also have it on the drawing, and all it is, is, like I said, is basically just showing it here. You can see this walkway is sort of shaded, so it's basically the walkway, the fence, the tree.
Can you mark and identify that drawing, too?
Oh, okay. This would be...
A-2.
A-2. Want to see? So that was not part of the original application. Original application was the fence on the inside, but the more we talked about it, the more we thought that that would be something that if the board is so of a mind to approve, would you approve it there? And we may get out there and say, you know what? There really isn't a lot of room to put the fence in, the tree roots are substantive. I put a... I drive in fence posts every five feet or 10 feet. That's not... That shouldn't be good. I'll move it to the inside. I'd like the board's approval to do it on the outside, and we would so advise the board professionals if we had to move it inside.
Would you not have the same problem inside with the tree roots?
Well, yeah, but if you get... You can go further away, and that's the whole point. Then you're starting to shrink.
That's...
The garden.
That was my point.
That's the point. So I think there's a way that we can do it. Our guys think that there's enough room there to do it. Again, these are not huge, you know, typical fence posts, you got a little six inch tube, you put it in the ground. We think it'll work, we think we can do it, because again, these trees, they look huge. Remember, the, the tree is this, and then the next tree is, you know, 20, 30 feet away, and there should be a way, we can do that. But we would clearly involve the board's professionals, you know, when we go out there and say, we're gonna dig a hole, two, three holes and say, hey, we want to put the fence here, we want to put the fence here. If they so agree, that's fine, if not.
That increases your space for available seating too, though, doesn't it?
Well, it, it does and it doesn't, I mean, not a lot of people are gonna, I think, sit under the tree all the time. I think a lot of people typically, they would use this, this is a fairly large area. I, the, the idea is to control, remember, we also have a capacity requirement, I don't know what the ABC said, how many people we can have here. Most people are gonna be here, the Adirondacks, or they're gonna be in, you know, just, right, we'll have cornhole, you know, think games that we can play on the lawn, your typical lawn games, which you don't show. But the idea was to sort of have some lawn games there, instead of making, if you're coming there on a Sunday, you've got nothing to do, go have something to drink, relax outside, it's quiet, because remember, the campus is closed.
Sitting way back under that tree is too far to walk to the bar.
So, conceptually, that's what we're looking to do, this, what this plan doesn't show, there is some other landscaping that from the drives coming in, where we're increasing the landscaping and the look, the beauty of those drives coming in. They're also on the plans, but that's, again, we've talked about that. Landscaping technically, we usually don't come to the board with landscape, we wanted to show you the full pan around, what we're looking to do. This is probably one of the nicest assets in the entire campus, 778 Campus. It's one of the newest buildings, you know, it's got that crescent look, it's glass, it's really attractive. This just notches it up a little bit.
Can you tell me from, from this, uh, uh, drawing here, what, what's the proximity of the parking?
Parking is all the way around the building, do we have, oh. See if you want to mark this?
Well, this one, this was submitted as part of the application package.
Okay. So, these are the buildings? Okay. Okay, so this is the cover sheet of the application. Here are the buildings, I'm sorry for my, excuse my back, it's here, and it's here, there's parking all the way around the building.
Okay.
All the way around. There is, uh, close to 1,200 cars on site.
How many feet would you say that is from the, the parking to the beer garden?
Uh, let's see, Tom, what's the scale here? That's thirty-two, I'd say, so here's, here's your car, for example, she's, these cars here, and those cars there, so what's that? Hundred feet, Tom?
Oh.
Does the thirty-two scale? Hundred feet? And this is what we expect people to do, they would park the places closest, which is on this side, and this side, and going out. The other parking down here is at the other entrances to the building, and they're not gonna park down there, they're gonna park right here. See all these spaces in here? All the spaces in there, that's where we expect them to park.
Do you have signage?
We haven't provided any signage. The idea being that we want to see how it goes. If it becomes a place that becomes popular, um, we would come back to either the zoning officer for, as a right sign, or we would come back to the board if we want to do something that isn't as a right. We have the monument signs in the campus, you know, out in the front, it basically addresses, we could just put it right on, that, the intention is not to create a new sign, but to put it there, but, do you put Kate's Beer Garden, do you put the Beer Ga-? We haven't really gotten that far because we don't know the success of, of the venture.
So the primary intent is for the, uh, tenants of the facility more than?
Of the campus. Yeah, but I don't want to, again, I don't want to say, you got an ID and show me your employee card. Somebody comes from, you know, the Hyatt House over in Hanover. Somebody comes from Gate Hall, comes across. I don't want to say no. Okay? That's the scope, if you want, I can go through the professionals' comments. Okay. I can take a seat? If you don't mind.
So, Mr. Gold, let's have one question on the, the trees, and I agree with you, the, the spacing of the posts would kind of dictate and how close the tree roots are and the drip line and whatnot. I would make a recommendation that you talk with the, the forester on that as well, he's very astute to, to that type of situation.
Well, talk, either, you know, if we, we've been dealing with Doug Jones who works for Jim, so we can, you know, if it's, we get Mr. Walsh's comments, or we get Doug's comments. He did the dried and wade project, and he helped us out on that, so absolutely no problem with that. Okay. Uh, the planners' comments? Okay, the, uh, the operation of the side amenities, you're, we're talking about the, the, uh, the amenities here, again, anything that's open, and, for example, Susan had asked about the space, the, the dog park, the playground, instead of anything inside the beer garden is gonna be open the time the beer garden's open. So it's not like we're gonna close it, you know, we don't want people in there after hours or before hours, so there would be, that the gate would be locked. But then when we open, playground area, the dog run, would all be operating under the same hours as the facility. So, we wouldn't want to encourage people to use it more or less than that. Okay?
Raises another, another question. Can alcohol be taken into the children's playground and the dog park? I don't know what are, if there's anything in our local ordinances that, can I leave my dog alone while I go get, get a drink?
We will, my understanding is, is that since that, those areas are fenced in as well, that the alcohol rules control areas, I mean, theoretically, I guess somebody could walk in there because it's within the, what they call the demise premises, which is the entire fenced-in area. It may be operationally that we may want to limit it as MacCallie, but I don't think there's anything from ABC that would preclude that from happening. I, you know, I. I'm sorry?
It's within the overall perimeter controlled by the ABC.
Right. So I don't, you know, how we, we could look to enforce it, I'm not certain that, unless it's somebody that's, you know, that's drank too much.
Right, I mean, you're gonna have security guards there.
Right, security guards are there. We have, um, we have to have certain staffing for the trailers or whatever, so there'll be personnel there, if there's a problem, we would notice it.
Mr. Chairman? As a, as a loyal user of the municipal dog park, the last thing that people in a dog park want is to have an owner not there with their dog. It's a, it's a, it's a, you know, things happen.
So maybe that the rules are, you, you, you're there with your dog, you're there with the dog.
I have no problem with an owner having a beer if he's there with, he or she's there with the dog, that's.
Good point, that's fine.
It's just you, it could open up to liability issues and all kinds of things you probably don't even want to think about.
It'd probably be the same thing with the playground.
You would post rules, I would think you would post rules at the gate of the dog park.
Correct, and we could provide that as a, again, hopefully a condition, that we would provide signage, again, subject to zoning, saying, you know, what size sign we can have, but, dog park, owners must be present, whatever it might be.
So, I'm not familiar with, with our local ordinances, uh, and the health, particularly the health ordinances. I find a nice table and chair, and I want to have a drink, and my dog's with me, am I allowed to do that?
I don't think there's anything in our ordinances that I know of that would prohibit it, you know, it'd be up to the, the.
Well, no, I, I know I can't take my dog into ShopRite unless it's a service dog.
That has to do more with Department of Health.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, and, and we are subject to Board of Health, so again, I think that would be addressed.
So, if I take my dog with me to use the dog park, how do I get to use your facility and buy a drink? If I can't take my dog into the restaurant park?
No, but you can, when you, once you come in, once you, you pay security and you're in, you go to the trailer, you can get your drink. You're with your dog, you get your drink, and that, you know, you want to go to the dog park, you'll walk down there with it. So you, you can easily get your drink and then go with your dog to the playground or to the dog park. So it's not like, you, you can do that.
It's just that once you get inside the dog park, you can take the leash off, correct? I mean, you can have your dog on a leash within this outdoor area.
But is that, is that permitted with our health ordinances?
We would be subject to whatever Board of Health says. I, I, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't answer that because I haven't gotten that far.
In order to line up health ordinances, it's not something.
We are subject to their approval, so whatever, we will have to go to them for their approval, so.
If I may, Mr. Gold, through the chair.
Sure.
Who is the intended audience of the, of, of the playground and the dog? I'm, I'm, I'm just having a little.
People who come during the weekend.
Right.
The idea would be is to entice them to come and be able to come and have something to drink, and, you know, if they want to take their kids, they want to get out for the day and do something in town, they come here, the kids can play while they have something to drink, they get something to eat. Um, it, I, I, it's not something where we expect a ton of people to use it, but is an amenity, again, for those people that want to take advantage of. It may turn out to be that it's a flop.
I'm just having trouble thinking of anywhere else where we offer both, you know, small children's activities and alcohol.
Go to Brooklyn.
Yeah, I don't go to Brooklyn, maybe that's a thing, I don't know.
You need a visa to cross the east river.
There's a lot of, uh, a lot of beer gardens around the region.
Mr. Chairman, we have our, as we mentioned to the minor side plant committee, we have our, the, the original concept of this is at our headquarters in Jersey City called Harborside. And we have a beer garden on the Hudson River that runs exactly the same way. People come and go, they, they bring their, again, this is Jersey City, but they come in, they bring their dogs, they bring their children. We have food trucks there, we, hopefully we will have food trucks here as well, if we need to, which we've done in the past. So the whole idea is, some of this stuff, we may, may turn out to be that it's not allowed, okay, we can't, or we try it and it fails.
There, there's a place in Cranford too, it's, it's a restaurant that has like a grassy area on the side, and has like giant connect floors.
To the contrary, my youngest kid is 11 and my dog is dead, so where were you?
You're not the target audience.
Not the target.
Scratch that guy. What's the proximity to local residents?
The closest residents are the people behind, you got the building on Sylvan, you got the other side of Sylvan. In the rear yard there is, you got Lake Precipity.
Right.
So, they can't, could they walk through the Sylvan Way property? We don't know all those properties on Sylvan Way. Could somebody theoretically walk through those, those yards, cross Sylvan Way, come down here? I guess.
I'm, no, I, I'm imagining an Oktoberfest celebration with an Oompa Band.
Now, we haven't planned any music at this point in terms of live music. If anything, there may be pipe music that we, you know, you have some mu- music. I can't tell you that we wouldn't look to do that, but at this point, we did it in Jersey City and we found that it was better not to. There, you're surrounded by a lot more residents than you are here. The, I know Wyndham, the Wyndham Headquarters Building at 14 and 22, they have music piped into their courtyard, and the residents are right behind them, and I've yet to hear that anybody's ever complained that there's music.
Well, that, you know, piped music, it'd be quite a bit, well, I'll tell you what, this weekend, go up to Germania Park in Dover, and you'll hear it alive. And, uh, yeah.
And again, there are also noise ordinances, again, the sixty-five DBs and fifty-five DBs requirement that you have to comply with too, so I would imagine that's quite a distance, I would say several hundred feet to a residence backyard.
And you've got buffering.
I'm sorry?
Well, yeah.
And, and the buffer.
And you've got some buffering, yeah.
Right, with, all the properties are long selling, again, we don't know all of them, but they all do have that landscape buffer, it's in some places up to 200 feet.
No, you're not gonna be open when the foliage is down.
Exactly. The, as we talked about in the minor side plant committee, the idea was basically to try and get open early May, Cinco de Mayo area, and typically, you know, holiday, Halloween weekend, that first weekend in November, after that, we wouldn't expect this to be, unless you, that, you know, the next week is 90 degrees, but it's not gonna be open at Thanksgiving, it's not gonna be open in, you know, March, it's seasonal.
Okay.
Mr. Gold, Golden, did you say, you don't recall the capacity?
No, because that's typically controlled by the ABC and Fire Department. I would imagine, though, it's fairly large because this is an open space, it's not a building, there, there, I mean, yes, there are eggs, it's whatever, but I, I would imagine it's fairly large. We can provide, we can provide that information and provide that. If I can continue on, on, on the lighting, unless the board had other questions? Okay, on the lighting, the comment was, we do show some additional lighting. It's on the plans, but we really, we will provide you with a column that says, we have six, and it'll make it a bit clearer, because apparently it's not clear from what I understand from the professionals, so we'll have eight bollards, we'll have six sconces, we'll have whatever, and we'll give you a little table. The symbols are there, but if you're not looking for it, you may not see it and say, oh, that's a light. We'll be a bit more clear on that and provide you with, with the table for that. The dog run, clearly we'll have to add receptacles, the intention was is that we would, um, we're more than likely would have, typically a lot of places have the, the bags themselves too. So if somebody comes and the dog does his business, you want them to clean it up, be able to deposit it into the receptacle. And again, since we have onsite maintenance people, they would clearly empty that as needed because there may be, uh, cups, garbage, debris, whatever, we'll clearly have to do that. Uh, and we've addressed signage, at this point, no new signage is proposed. Again, if we do, we would go to either the zoning officer for that, for a compliance sign, and if not, we'd be in front of the board. Okay? Um, and then Mr. Canjiano's comments from K and K. Item one, he wanted us to show directional arrows on the grading plan, we have no problem with that. We talked a little bit about the stormwater. Mr. Canjiano is recommending that because we would comply, we would have to comply with, uh, stormwater management for quantity reduction, that we would work with Mr. Canjiano to provide a suitable method of that. We're only talking about a quarter acre of new impervious, so the thought was maybe we do some sort of stone storage under the pavers or in the lawn, something, maybe a pipe, something, it's not a lot. You're talking about 10,000 square feet, that's not a large area. But we'll have to figure out a way to deal with that, and Mr. Canjiano suggested he'd be, he'd offer his services, help us design that.
Is there any thought that, that you could do some maybe pervious?
Well, that's an option, and we're talking about postures, something like a, some, some kind of, uh, infiltration trench of stone bed that would infiltrate back.
Because I know it's not a lot, but it's important.
The pervious pavers, just a couple of things about them, one is the maintenance of them after a year or two.
Yeah.
If you're not really on top of it, the dirt, the dust, the pollen, unless you're absolutely fastidious about it, it sort of, sort of reduces that the functionality of it, but the issue.
But it's not like a parking paver thing.
No, but the idea was to do that, again, a true porous paver under the DP manual typically requires a, up to a 30-inch profile underneath the paver. That would be about 25,000 cubic feet.
That's just one idea, I'm just talking about green infrastructure.
So that, we would, if it turns out to be an infiltration trench or something along those lines, we'll work with the engineer to do that.
Yeah.
With an eye to, if it can be green, it will be green.
Because while this perimeter, perimeter of trees is beautiful, I appreciate it, with all the other things that are going on, dried and wade for one, I have high school kids coming to the town complaining. There are, people are upset about what's going on around that area, and I just think, um, stormwater reduction is important, so the green infrastructure would go a long way to maybe appeasing some of that.
Okay, so we will work with K and K too.
There's multiple options for that, so we can discuss it.
Yep. Okay. Uh, we talked about the lighting, they want to know, again, each, the lights are there, but we'll provide a detailed sheet that better indicates where those lights are. We talked about the operation of the charging podiums, I think we've discussed that in fairly enough detail, unless the board disagrees. There are no lights for the charging podiums, there's sufficient lighting in the parking lot, these are areas that are in the parking lot, so the parking lot is lit, so there's really no reason to add more to it, it'll be perfectly available, ready, readable, et cetera, because we have lighting already existing. We haven't proposed any water in the dog run, I mean, we have dog runs in Jersey City, we don't provide water. I live in Bergen County, and the two largest ones in Bergen County don't have water. Uh, we'll have water available because we have the trailers and, and things there, so if need be, we can provide water for people, the dog is panting and there's an issue there and they need water, we'll have it there, but the idea would not be, we could also probably attach a hose to one of the outdoor building hose bibs if we had to, but the idea was not to provide water there, um, just because it, it seemed unnecessary to us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say, once again, as a, as a loyal user of the municipal dog park, water is very much appreciated. Your customers will very much appreciate it if it's there for the animals. And, uh, our, our facility has essentially a water fountain with two buttons on it. It's not a major, I, I, I'm speaking out of school, it might have been major at the time, but it's certainly a rather humble fountain, but it serves its purpose and everyone's very grateful that it's there.
We would, we would look at, I talked to the landscape architect earlier, we'd look at, you know, again, we can provide water even if it's a matter of having, you know, a, a large.
Trowel.
Trowel. Thank you. There, something that, again, we would use if need be, but again, the idea is, I really don't want to have to rip up the lawn to run a one-inch line and put a fountain in, again, that is gonna be used by the dogs, no, no, no offense to the dogs. If it was person, that'd be a little bit different, but that, I appreciate the comment.
People do use it as well, I mean, that's.
Right, well, again, they'll have the ability to get water, et cetera. Again, we talked about this earlier at the minor side plant, the, the restroom facilities where there is water and restrooms are available in the buildings too, so it's not like there's no, we're in a desert and there's no water available, there is water available.
So now I've got to go explain this to my two dogs.
That's an interesting point, the restrooms are in the building.
Yes.
I come there on Sunday, I'm, I'm not a, a tenant.
They are open.
They're open.
They're open, property management will control that. You're not gonna be able to walk the building, you'll be able to, the restrooms are ready as you come in the door.
That's fine.
They'll be open.
You, now that you're parking the, two trailers, three trailers?
Two, at this point, that's what we contemplate, I'm showing the joint.
You're running water and electricity and presumably gas?
Well, they are run, they're self-contained structures, so that, um, water and effluent are part of, will be provided in tanks as part of the, the trailers. We're thinking about, again, if we need to, it's not, we don't need to run gas, there would be, it's like the pizza oven, it's, it's a little propane type thing that you, I'm sure we all use in our backyard. So the idea is not to run any utilities from the building to here, that would all be self-contained.
So any, any waste, how does it get, do you have to move the trailer?
No, we have, that will be emptied, it's part, it's part of the self-contained, we can provide more detail in the trailer, but it's, it's self-contained in that whatever effluent comes out of the trailer is contained and gets removed either at the end of the day or, or more than that if it has to be, but that would be an operational issue by the operators of the trailers, they would need to deal with that.
Which is sinkways from the rest.
Right, that, I mean, it's gonna be if somebody's mixing a drink or whatever, they're gonna put ice, and they're gonna get a little bit of water spritz, where, gonna wash their hands, whatever, there's gonna be some of that, absolutely. The soil erosion plan, we need to amend to provide the total estimated area of the disturbance, that's not a problem. The limits of proposed curb removal, there is some, some of the landscaping out in front of the buildings, the, the detail for where the curb starts and stops, we'll provide that to K and K. We obviously have to comply with the tree ordinance, we believe we do, um, in terms of what's being taken down versus what is being replaced, but we will run that by Mr. Walsh or Mr. Jones at, at PNF for their consent to that plan, because I assume they are the ones that would review and approve that. Okay? Um, and we've talked about existing, we don't, we don't believe there's gonna be any impact to parking, again, after work, people are leaving by the droves, unfortunately. Um, and on the weekends, people are not coming at all, other than to come here or maybe to go to Hyatt House or, you know, wherever. The other comments, um, Mr. Canjiano came up with his resolution of the issues, we have to provide bonds in a pre-con and a completion of the as-built bond completion, all standard conditions to us. Those are the two major comment letters that I got, there were other comment letters with no comments.
How, how would, uh, two questions, how, how would you deal with, MacCallie's been kind enough to, uh, host walks for various nonprofits and 5K runs and that, that sort of thing, how, how do you deal with that?
Having, again, depending on when my walk is, I think most, a lot of, sometimes the walks are in November, if I recall?
Um, it was spring.
Early, so.
It was recently a cancer walk.
Oh, a cancer walk, so, Mr. Chairman, I, truthfully, did not give it thought.
Just saying, I, that, that affects your parking issue.
Right.
I mean, those bring in sometimes thousands.
Right, but again, if the, the operation is after five o'clock, we would expect that, that still wouldn't be an issue because.
The walks are usually on a weekend, Saturday or Sunday.
Nobody's in the campus on, nobody's really on the campus on Saturday and Sunday, there are people working there, but again, we're talking 1,200 something cars, I can't imagine that would be an issue. Again, in all these properties that we own, again, you have 1, 3, 5, 7 Sylvan, they're all owned by MacCallie. On the backside, 2, 4, 6, 8 Campus, they're all owned by MacCallie. So if miraculously this entire lot was full, God, God bless us, we have adjoining properties that people would easily be able to park and walk.
Second question, you know, presumably since you're, would have limited, if any, dishwashing facilities, assume you're gonna be serving in, on plastic, in, in plastic cups, do you have a solid waste plan?
We would, uh, we would have to provide one, I guess, the idea would be is we would have recept, we'd have trash receptacles, whatever. I have to find out how we deal with that, Mr. Chairman, but if you make that a condition of approval, that we provide you with a plan, how we are addressing waste at the end of the day, we will do that.
And I would urge that that would be biodegradable to the greatest extent practicable, I mean, there's lots of places in New York City, for instance, that have, you know, bowls that are made of paper, et cetera.
So if you put a can out for plastic in a can, because the idea is not to provide, it should be basically plastic, you tend, we're not serving bottled a beer or cans of it, you're gonna get a drink, you know, a little plastic cup, you're gonna get. an empanada on a plastic plate or whatever it is, so it should be mostly all plastic, but we would obviously need to deal with that if in fact there is garbage, people just throw food in or something else other than the plastic, we'll have to deal with that and provide that on the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I would, Judy's probably going to jump in and try to reduce, reduce the plastic as much as possible.
Judy is also a member of the environment.
Understood.
We're exploring and have introduced an ordinance for a single-use plastic bag ban, it's just bags, but with that in mind, if you could look to maybe providing some more biodegradable type plates and things that you use in other places.
Where we can, if we can identify that for your professionals, that we can use this, that, or the other, we will provide what we think we can do, subject to, again, your consent, that's fine.
It would go a long way for you to, very forward-thinking in person.
Right, the ban, the plastic bag, the plastic bag ban is, I live in Paramus, and Paramus just introduced the same thing. So that's coming, and that is something that I think is going to become commonplace, but your point is well-taken, is that where we can, we would identify, and I can check again, we've been running the operation Harvest Side for two years, so we have a pretty good idea on that of how much we generate, the quantity of people, what is being generated, and how we deal with it. So I think in that sense, I could probably put together a short little narrative that describes how we would deal with that, subject to your approval.
That would be great, because if you're going to be looking at these kinds of things in other areas here.
Yeah, well, this would be the only one.
Oh, okay.
I think one's enough.
And I would say where plastics are used, that they have the ability to be recycled and that you provide that as well.
So we will.
Given the current and new.
We'll try and look at a, an operations statement that describes how we would deal with those sorts of issues, and as best as we can, and then take comments from you on what else we may be able to consider or not consider, but I think we have a good basis, because we've run Harvest Side, this is now our third season, so we have a pretty good background there.
So begs the next question, if you're holding these plastics, I picture mountains of solo cups, dumpster placement, I assume you're not going to take this stuff out every night?
No, the idea would be, we'll have, again, in the buildings, we have storage rooms on the ground floor, most of that stuff will be stored there, just like the chairs and stuff in off-season, we may not leave everything out there, we would store it in the buildings, ground floors of both buildings have extensive storage, so the idea would be to keep stuff in the building, bring it out as needed.
So no dumpsters on this site?
No dumpsters, definitely not, definitely not.
But garbage cans.
Correct, no dumpsters inside that circle, there may be, there are dumpsters on the property.
Yes.
But we would not put a dumpster in that, in the beer.
The dumpsters that are on the property are appropriately housed, though they're fenced and all that.
Correct.
So that's what I was going for with this, if you're going to have a dumpster there, it's got to be concealed somehow.
Yeah, that would not be the intention.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add just.
You're running electricity out to here or you're not running on generators, are you?
No, no.
What's that?
Well, they have, there is power out, there is power here, I mean, we have the lights, we're not running it on generators.
Okay.
No generators.
And Ms. Vavada, you have a question?
Yeah, just, it wasn't addressed yet, in my memo, I'd also just noted some inconsistencies with details and things like that in the plans, so just when, when you submit for compliance.
We will do that, because again, what we tried to do, we originally, because when we started this process, the amount of factual data we had on this, we didn't have a, out the survey that we could rely upon, this was done, we purchased the asset in 97, so we had to, we had our engineer go out and do brand-new topo, brand-new boundary, et cetera, so we will make sure there, if there are inconsistencies between the civil and the landscape architect, we will rectify those.
I think everything is there, it's just not necessarily referenced in the right place.
And that, that happens unfortunately, because I, you try, it's like herding sheep, I got a civil and I got a landscape, and I, I try to catch them all, but I can't do it all.
You guys are right there.
I know, I know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. If this proposal, over time, does not succeed, does corporate have a time limit as to when you would pull the plug, or have you considered that?
No, we're hoping we don't have to, but if in fact it doesn't succeed, we would obviously just close, I mean, it would probably be, who knows, we may start this and you may get to October and nobody comes.
Right.
I think, just like as you say, I think it's going to take, we, I think we're set for getting it open, running it, getting to the next season and seeing where we are, because nothing, I don't think we would ever do something for this season and say, oh, that's it.
And then the dead of winter is not going to be.
Right, and the campus is changing, the whole idea of all of this has changed, so we would, we wouldn't do it this year, if anything, if next year it turns out to be a failure, it's a failure.
Thank you.
And again, at that point, other than the trailers leaving the site, the other improvements would probably stay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask one more, I know you said it's seasonal, but I could envision a potential scenario where you had a special event on a decently warm night in November, December, and you wanted to have hot chocolate or something, should the planning board, you know, provide for that, you know, on a one-off basis? Obviously, the trailers would be gone and.
Well, they'd be there, we're not going to, the idea is, the trailers were basically, we went to.
But they wouldn't be open necessarily.
If, I was going to say, if it's just serving food, if it's just a food stand, I don't see any reason to put any limits on it, even in the middle of December, if you want to have a Christmas party out there.
We would be open to that if the board so desires, I, we hadn't thought of that, because again, we don't do it in Jersey City, but you're right, I mean, on a, on a seasonally warm day and the week before Christmas.
Yeah.
Would that make sense? Yeah, I guess.
I don't believe there's any conditions saying that this needs to operate only seasonally. It can operate around, so should you choose to open for a couple of days around Christmas?
Right, we originally talked about that when we talked to the zoning officer about that, is what the intention was, is, because we talked about whether we needed a temporary use permit or not, so we realized we didn't have to, but yeah, I would like that flexibility, I don't see, we haven't done it in Jersey City in three years, but I can't say never.
Uncover the fountain and have ice skating.
Well, again, the fountain, you can see, it's not, it'd be awfully small, you'd be probably one person going around clockwise, one person going around counterclockwise.
Snoopy doesn't need a very big.
Everybody else will have a hot toddy and watch.
Right. So that, that's, again, I think I've tried to address the professionals' comments and the board's comments, we're optimistic that this will be a success, we really do hope it is, just another amenity to the campus and another amenity for the township, so other than that, we would just request the board if they have any other questions, if not, we'd ask your favorable consideration of the application.
Do you have any?
Again, Tom couldn't have said it, couldn't have said it any better than Tom, but again, we do have some technical firepower in the audience, that if there's any more detailed, more technical questions that you want to hear directly from the landscape architect, directly from the engineer that are here, but otherwise, I believe Tom covered everything.
If you want to bring them forward, that's up to you.
I have no intention to, but if the board has any questions that Tom wasn't able to satisfactorily answer, the men are here to answer any questions.
Do any members of the board have any questions for this witness?
No. No.
Okay, do you, does any member of the board have any questions for, do you have landscape?
I have a landscape architect who designed the landscaping and the amenity, he's an amenity designer, Tom Carmen's here, and we also have our engineer, civil engineer, if there's any.
Anyone have any questions for landscape or the civil engineer? Would you like to have them brought forward?
Not necessary.
Not necessary, okay.
Open to public on this witness?
Yeah, I will. Okay, any, no other questions from members of the board? I'll open it to members of the public for anyone that has any questions for this witness.
Since I'm here. I'm going for something else, but this sounds very interesting. Good to see. How are you?
Uh, just, yeah, thank you.
I know the. Casey Perick, 45 degrees. Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
What are the hours of operation for other facilities you have, is it, does it close at 10:00?
The intention is to run from five in the, five in the afternoon, evening, whatever, to 10:00 during the week, and on the weekends from 12.
12 to 10.
To 10, that would be the, 10:00 is what we should.
So is it okay for us to put it in our resolution, that it will be only until 10:00, 10:00, seven days a week?
Those would be the hours that you would expect, that we offered to the board, if we decide, the board puts it in the resolution, we would adhere to that, if we need to change it, we'd come back to the board.
Can I ask our counselor a question, ABC allows open until 2:00 a.m.
Yeah.
Would this preclude ABC regulations? If they agree to close at 10?
If they agree to the condition, I, you know, we, then we can make it a condition of the application without, you know, being preempted by federal law or state law, as far as I'm concerned.
So state law would not supersede their agreement in the resolution?
Not, particularly not if they, if they.
Mr. Chairman, in Jersey City, we close at 12, not 2:00.
At 12.
So we voluntarily close at 12, so we're volunteering to close at 10 here, again, if it turns out that there's a demand for something longer than that, we would, because this is a rule, we'd have to come back to the board, to amend that, if we want to go, for example, until 11:00.
I'm just curious how these things work, are you closed at 10, or is 10 the last call?
Well, 10:00 would be, is you stop serving and you would shutter, you start shutting down, and Ken, I wouldn't be pushing everybody out at 10, but the idea would be you stop operations, and I would think, I'll check with them, I don't know, do we turn the lights out at a certain point?
Maybe you order five drinks and then sit there for midnight.
Again, I would say that, that would not be intense, intense is to stop at 10, just like in a, in a bar, whatever, you stop and you ask the people to kind of.
Okay, the second question is, since it's open area, it's, you know, smoking and everything is allowed, I assume?
Yes, we're not.
Cigar, cigarette, whatever it is.
We would prohibit that, I'm not aware that we would be obligated to.
Add that.
Again, a question on ordinances, smoking allowed in a food service establishment?
Outdoor, health department doesn't regulate outdoors.
Other than 25 feet from the building.
Yes, they have the limit from the building.
But that, I'm not aware of anything other than that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking more about the kids, and the kids are going to be there, so that's why I was thinking about that.
Well, yeah, you're inviting dogs and children with the park, I don't know that I would want to bring my four-year-old and sit next to a table full of smokers, so I have to get up and move, what if the place is busy and there's a long.
So would we want them to restrict smoking area?
In the table area?
I, I'm open to the board's suggestion.
Yep, the, the idea, well, that's.
The problem is, if you ask the planning board to enforce that and that's not a rule of the health department, who do you expect to go out and enforce that? I mean, go out and tell those five people to put their cigarettes on their cup, I'm going to go out at night and enforce that?
I'll take my dog with me.
Got to remember that all these restrictions that you apply, someone has to enforce it, so if it's not a health regulation, health is not going to go out and enforce it just because the planning board decided they thought it was a good idea, so you have to have someone who's willing to go out and enforce those regulations, and that.
Or we can ask them to give, extend their goodwill and to stay within what they've agreed to, and the next time they come for us, before us, and they don't agree, do actually what they say they're going to do, we say no.
Question.
I mean, I, I think the question is, if there was no kids' play area close to it, then it's a different story, but now we are talking about, you know, there is a kids' play area, right there.
No smoking in the kids' area.
Or, yeah, discourage it.
Yeah, inside that.
The rules that we talked about is putting the signs up, the rules that you want to see. I don't have any problems with that.
Similar to park rules, I mean, we didn't, we didn't talk about it, but you should supervise your children also.
We have rules, you should walk, like, for example, that if so desired, we can, parents must be with dogs, parents must be with children, no smoking in this area, we can provide those, that signage.
Does anyone know, does Parsippany currently allow smoking in any of its parks?
I believe so, and even in the parks where there are picnic areas.
We have no smoking areas in the parks, they just proposed the signage to me and asked me if I had a difficulty with the signage, they are going to start making the parks no smoking.
Because I know Denville does not allow smoking in any of its parks.
Yeah, we're, we're just looking at, into that now, I was just in a meeting and they, they passed some signage, they want to come across with some signage, I don't know if they're doing it to all of our parks, but they're looking to do it to several of our parks, to have no smoking signs.
Who will enforce that?
Probably parks and forestry, because they enforce the parks. Any regulations that.
As a reformed smoker, I'm very much against smoking, especially where there's children around.
Yeah.
Can you consider making this area no smoking?
I think I would, I would defer to my CEO, I can assure the board, though, for example, where the, for example, the children's play area or other areas, that we make sure that they are no smoking areas, but I would be loathe to say to make the entire area non-smoking, because again, this is, I want to retract and keep my tenants, I don't want to discourage people from using this area, so if there's a fine line between achieving your goal of, I think all our goals of keeping the kids safe from it, and yet not discouraging use of it, if we can somehow come to some medium on that, my initial reaction would be not to say I would enforce it throughout.
Can you, can you look at doing what restaurants used to do and designate a smoking area before they went to total smoking ban?
Mr. Chairman, yes.
You can.
Look at that, say, smoking, you know, the kids' area, the kid, at the other end.
On, okay.
Okay, we will, again, as part of our rules and plan for that, we would provide something along that line.
Designate a smoking area.
Designate a smoking area, and again, we have that, again, most buildings, you have a, no, not within 25 feet, but even in our, most of our buildings, we tell people, this is where you should be smoking, I'd rather, you know, because it's a wide span.
You shouldn't be smoking, but if you have, that's where you go.
I don't, I don't want the smoking right in front of my entrance, you know, 26 feet away from the entrance.
Right.
I want, so, it's the same, I don't want you 25 feet away from the kids, I want you sort of over there, and again, this is not a huge area, but it's big enough that we can probably separate that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perick. Anyone else in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay, I'll open to the board for any comments on this application, any comments from any board members?
Mr. Chairman, the proposal sounds very interesting, exciting, I wish you the best, it should be approved.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering, the pizza oven, is that going to be enclosed?
It's a, we provided a detail in the drawing, in the plan set, it's basically a self-contained structure.
Self-contained, okay.
That, again, it's, you know, sort of a, I wish I had the drawing with me, we have that, it is a self-contained structure, it's not, it's something that can be moved, but the idea is, it is all self-contained.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you have that.
Any other board members?
I think this project fits well with, within what we're trying to do with all of the office complexes around, to make them, make them attractive because of the way that especially millennials seem to be preferring to be in buildings that have amenities, where they don't have to go driving to get lunch or whatever, this looks like an excellent opportunity to make Parsippany's buildings.
We actually took a picture of what we have in Jersey City, it's called.
This isn't going to be open for long.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond.
Five, five p.m. to noon to 10.
What is your weekday hours?
Five to 10.
Five to 10, okay, you're not going to be open for lunch at all?
No, because we have employees and tenants and businesses there, would not be something we want to encourage.
Put the areas open to the employees to come and at least sit, right?
Oh, absolutely, they do now.
Yeah.
Okay, so they have that amenity.
Oh, they have, it's there now, but they, the trailers will not be open to serve.
I know I heard the, the hours, but I thought that was just the weekends, so it'd be five to ten.
Well, you don't want employees having a half a dozen beers. No, the idea would be also, again, to get people to stay, instead of jumping in the car and clogging up the highways, stay, come and have a beer, come have a, you know, empanada, relax for a little bit, six o'clock, go home, spread it out.
So you have, you have dinner for, for the millennials to enjoy that. I don't see, I don't see any contradiction of our plan, our master plan here. I think that overall, personally, I personally, if I were running the place, I'd throw in lunch as something, maybe not with beer, but.
Well, we have plenty of food services in our buildings. Again, there's a fine line between having everybody stay in the building.
Yeah.
Or having people go out into Parsippany to go get something to eat. You know, we, we want people to not just stay and not go anywhere, not participate, not go to Wegmans, not go to Zinburger or wherever. We want them, during the day, it's not as traffic, you want people in and out, you don't want, I'd, I'd love to get, we used to do it in Jersey City, and our philosophy has totally changed. We want people coming to us, because we have a food, we opened up a $5 million food hall in our headquarters, and there's thirteen vendors there, and we get people from all over. It's like the Williamsburg Food Hall. That's what we would encourage, but something like this, we want people out of the building. We want people, if they want to come out, they can come out here. If not, focus on, don't just stay locked up in your building.
This is a multicultural endeavor. You've got a German beer garden, you've got Mexican empanadas, you've got Italian.
You're not going to add to traffic. A few cars here and there is not going to kill anybody, but you would, if you go over to Wegmans at lunch hour, if you've been over to Wegmans, and see how full the lot is between twelve and two during the week?
Yeah, I've seen it.
It's, it's great. Really is.
All right, well, let me rephrase my comments a little bit and just say, it does not seem to in any way harm the master plan. It does seem to be an attractive amenity for a business that's in Parsippany that can attract business and retain business. Therefore, I am in favor of the application as it stands.
Okay, any other board members?
With a few tweaks.
I'll open to the members of the public. If any members of the public have any comments on this application. You know, want to come forward, I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carlson's been keeping track of all the stuff.
In application nineteen colon five one oh four, I move that we grant preliminary and final major site plan subject to.
The following conditions.
The following conditions.
In addition to complying with the board professional's letters as stated by Mr. Golden and his comments, we've got seven additional conditions. One, the applicant shall make best efforts to make the car chain charging stations available to patrons of the beer garden during the beer garden's hours of operation to the satisfaction of the board's engineer and planner.
Okay.
Two, signage will be added to the plans showing the rules that owners must stay in the dog park with their dog to the satisfaction of the board professionals. Trash receptacles will be provided in the dog park area. Four, applicant will install stormwater reduction features to the satisfaction of the board's professionals. Five, a solid waste plan will be provided for the review and approval of the board's planner and engineer. In addition, the applicant will make best efforts to use recyclable and/or biodegradable single-use materials, i.e. plates, cups, et cetera, to the satisfaction of the board's professionals. Six, the beer garden shall close no later than 10:00 PM unless amended approval is granted by the planning board. And seven, smoking shall be prohibited in the children's play area and dog park area, I would say expressly prohibited, and appropriate signs shall be added to the plans indicating as much. In addition, smoking shall be limited to a designated smoking area.
Agreed, sir.
There we have it. What you got?
Adult may, must be present with the children when they're in the children's play area.
And that would be on our signage as well.
Yeah. And they're going to consult with the township forester regarding replacement of the fence.
Okay.
Yes.
At all.
Okay. Anyone recall anything else? Okay. Second, Mr. Chairman? Okay, is that your motion, Mr. Ginsmore?
Yes. And pretty much its entirety.
Hey, Mr. Mealy, seconds, please call a roll.
Mr. Perelik?
Yes.
Mr. Ginsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Pedri?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Ms. Veely?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes.
We have a new member.
He's an alternate.
I live right around the corner, so I will do my best to make sure you're successful.
They explain if they have enough members, the questions don't go, so, from one of our main members. You could always call, but you won't. Whenever it's explained. She keep not calling me.
Okay.
All right, we're going to review this non-condemnation for fifteen fifteen route ten. Ed Snikus is not available this evening. David, David, you want to come forward? And our counselor is just going to give a two-minute introduction before you get started.
I'm going to, we'll hear in more detail in a moment, but let me just explain generally what's going on here is, this concerns the project and District of Fifteen Fifteen. I'm sure everyone here is familiar with it. As most of you are probably aware, the property straddles the municipal law, boundary between Parsippany and Hanover. Recently, annexation was completed, we swapped land with Hanover to square off the parcel that's in Parsippany. Previously, this board had designated Parsippany portion as an area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation. Now that we've acquired the two-plus acres from Hanover, that needs to now be included in that area in need, and that is why we're here.
Yeah, if I could just jump in, unfortunately, it's probably not the last you're going to see of this. There likely will be some changes to the redevelopment plan, and then they will be coming, District Fifteen for site plan, Fifteen Fifteen for site plan, probably later in the summer or early fall. And the board will recall that previously you opined on master plan consistency of just the annexation, so getting a lot of cracks at the apple, I guess, but I guess David will explain.
You need this.
Sure. As I hand you swear the testimony, you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Hi, David.
Could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure. My name is David Novak, N-O-V-A-K. I am an associate principal with Burgess Associates and a professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
For the board members, that Burgess Associates remains one of the townships retained planning entities and is here in that capacity tonight.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. Mr. Carlson's done a very good job of recapping while we're here. From what I understand, there are some new board members here that might not be familiar with the past projects, so what I'll do very briefly is just go into a background of what this is. This all deals with what we call the local redevelopment and housing law, or the LRHL for short. The LRHL is a state statute that essentially lays out the process for redevelopment, and that process is this. It starts with the governing body authorizing the planning board to investigate an area to determine if it's an area in need of redevelopment, and there's specific criteria that a site needs to meet in order to get that designation. The planning board or a consultant will conduct that study, they'll see if it meets the criteria, they'll hold a public meeting, and they'll either recommend to the governing body that either the entirety of the site or a portion of the site, or none of the site meets that area in need of criteria. The governing body will then adopt the resolution, designating all or part of the area to be an area in need of redevelopment, and then the governing body will authorize the preparation of redevelopment plan. And that's all been done with this site thus far. Back on April 21st, 2015, the township council authorized the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine if block 200 lot 1.2 or 1.02, depending if you're going based on the tax records or based on the survey, met the area in need designation. That study was conducted, a public hearing was done and held on August 20th, 2015, and the planning board found that the site met two criteria, the criterion A, which is for deterioration, and criterion D, which is regarding obsolete site design and layout. The board is interested, I can read what those criterion are as I go along. So the ultimate recommendation of the planning board to the body, governing body, was to designate the entire area in need of redevelopment. On September 22nd, 2015, the township council considered that recommendation, they adopted a resolution establishing the site as a non-condemnationed redevelopment area, and then subsequently directed the preservation, preparation of a redevelopment plan. And that redevelopment plan was adopted by ordinance 2017:18, and then later amended by 2018:22. So if this is all done, why am I here tonight? As has just been discussed, the council was presented with and has approved an annexation petition requesting the annexation of a portion of block 300 lot 14 in the township of Hanover by Parsippany, and then an annexation of a portion of block 200 lot point two, 1.2 in the township of Parsippany by Hanover. And I'll bring this with me, and I'll point that these areas, the triangular area to be annexed by Parsippany is located here in what we'll call the southerly corner, and then the area to be annexed by Hanover is located to the west of that. The area being annexed by Parsippany is just about two acres in size. Hanover is getting just about one acre, so at the end of this annexation, the township will technically be one acre larger.
Mr. Novak, could you just trace what the new boundary line will be, because it's difficult to envision.
Absolutely.
Took me a little while.
So, this boundary was the original area. What the new area will be, it'll follow this southerly lot line and then head north. So in a very specific and technical planning term, we're essentially squaring off the site.
So literally all of fifteen fifteen will be in Parsippany?
All of fifteen fifteen will be in Parsippany.
Okay.
And Hanover gets the hotel.
And Hanover will get the hotel.
And the hotel revenue. There's a former township official that was quite upset that Hanover gets all the hotel facts.
It is what it is.
So when the redevelopment plan was prepared, it contemplated that area to be annexed, but there was never any area in need of redevelopment study conducted by the township because it wasn't township property. Therefore, it's necessary to do such a study in order to incorporate the redevelopment plan, so what we're doing right now is playing catch-up. That's what this study does. It examines that piece of property to see if it meets the criteria, and it also makes sure that the inclusion of that property does not change the fact that the remaining larger portion of the site met the criteria. And long story short, through this study, which is dated May 31st, 2019, conclusion of the study is that the site to be annexed met the same criteria, that was criteria A and D. It also noted that the statute allows for properties to be included in a redevelopment area where they don't always meet the strictest, most technical definition of the criteria when the inclusion of that is necessary for the implementation of the redevelopment plan. So ultimately, the study found that it did meet A and D, and also it needed to be included in order to really effectuate the plan. So the recommendation of the plan was to resume, recommend the designation of the annexed area as an area in need of redevelopment, and to really coalesce it into a larger, more comprehensive redevelopment area. The next step, should the planning board determine that that is the recommendation to go with, would be to recommend the governing body to amend the redevelopment plan as such. The governing body would then review and approve that, and then, as stated before, authorize a new redevelopment plan, which will likely require a, an amendment or two or three.
Novak, are any of the, the current structures within this two-acre area now?
No. The existing structures are already entirely located within Parsippany. The area to be annexed is really just a parking area that services those two buildings.
All right. Someone move to send that, the amended.
Do we need to have any discussion, or let the public be in?
Well, I just want to also state that once the governing body does make that designation, they'll refer it back here to this board for master plan consistency, correct?
Yes.
So, again, you'll be seeing this at least a couple more times, even before they come for site plan. So we don't need to do master plan consistency tonight, it's really just recommending to the governing body that they designate the area.
So move Ginsmore.
Well, we should, let's open to the public. It's a matter of form.
Well, first, does, do any members of the board have any questions on what Mr. Novak just said?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Novak, has the annexation actually taken place?
That is, and thank you very much, I should put that on the record. The annexation was approved, and that was by ordinance number 2019:27.
I believe it has yet to be approved by, on Hanover's side, but anyway.
It was approved by the important municipality, which would be Parsippany in this case.
Now you're nitpicking.
I am, I'm sorry, we all want to go home.
No, no, it's very important to point out, yes.
This, this, on the back of our sheets here is not the actual approval? I haven't read it because of print.
Is that ordinance number 2019:27?
No, this is, this is just a written description of the Hanover lot seat.
Yeah, this is at least the background. Yeah, I mean, it's in the, it's in the works in Hanover, they just haven't officially done it.
Also, I should also point out as well, the council did direct the planning board to undertake this investigation, and that was resolution 2019-108, so, otherwise I would not be here.
Well, I move.
There's no subversion going on here, this is just detail work.
Well, since, since it has to go up to them, to the council to approve, and they send it back to us to approve, I think telling the council that in our opinion, this looks to need the, to be designated as a non-condemnationed area in need of redevelopment.
I think we need, first need a motion to designate, and then we'll need a second motion to approve the resolution as of before.
Ah, well, we're amending the resolution, it's already there, right?
Well, no, I've prepared a new resolution.
That's what this is, right?
Put your hand.
To recommend it, because they have to designate.
So I should move.
So first, let's, just like we would move to approve an application, then the resolution, then let's, let's move to approve or to recommend the designation of the site as an area in need of redevelopment.
I move that we so recommend.
Good. Second, Pedri. Pedri, seconds, please call a roll.
Mr. Perelik?
Yes.
Mr. Ginsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Pedri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Ms. Veely?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes.
You sure he didn't hit a vote at this time, because we're missing.
Then, Mr. Mandell?
Yes.
There we go.
No, motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, motion to approve the resolution.